Informational meeting only. It is the operational and performance audit report of the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. And this, the first part, we're going to start out with the presentation by Mr. Mark Swain, who is the Metro Auditor, and Mr. Carlos Holt, who is the Office of Internal Audit. He has some guests with him that will most certainly he will introduce to you all. So please give them your timely attention. And then after we finish that, we're going to around 6:00, start with the hiring process for the new director. So until then, we will get started with the audit report. Mr. Swain.
Okay. I'm Mark Swain from the Metropolitan Office of Internal Audit as a Metropolitan Auditor. Today we have Mr. Carlos Holt, the Internal Audit Manager, on my left on the far side. We also have from the Audit Committee, Mr. Bob Brannan, who's the Chairman of the Audit Committee, and Brad Reed, who represents the Chamber of Commerce from the Audit Committee here. And we have Mr. Rich Rehling from Director of Finance, and Mr. Glover is Council Representative, and Jacoby Dowell is a representative. So I think we have almost everybody in the Audit Committee except for Vice Mayor Neighbors here. And what I, we're here today to give you an opportunity to have a debriefing of the audit of the Metropolitan Nashville Public School System, which is about a year's effort that was, ended up with a report issued on February 10th, 2015. We have representatives from the firm that was hired by the Audit Committee to produce the deliverable. And we have Ms. Sharon Murphy from McConnell Jones Lanier &amp; Murphy, and Odysseus Lanier, and I'll let them take over from there.
Great. Thank you so much for having us today. We have been given by Mr. Swain and Mr. Glover and the other representatives of the Audit Committee the charge for kind of quickly kind of going through some of the highlights of what our findings were in the report. And so what we're going to do is, I think we've got roughly 30 minutes, and we're going to take about 15, 12 to 15 minutes of those, just kind of going through, talking, giving you some brief highlights about just what some of the observations and recommendations were, focusing mainly on those recommendations with cost savings. We're going to spend a lot of time on that. And then what we'll do, most of you have a copy of the executive summary, and so you can, there's a lot of detail in the, the executive summary is roughly 18 pages long. And so you could, just feel free to ask us questions. We want to yield our, the second 15 minutes of our time to doing that. Okay, go ahead. So if we're going to just dive right into it with our, instead of kind of going over the, the objectives, we're going to dive right into what we achieved. 129 recommendations, three that involved outsourcing alternatives. I know we're probably going to get several questions on that. The fiscal impact of those recommendations were savings of $18 million per year over five years, investment of $19 million over five years, net investment, and I'm looking right here, net investment of $272,000, and a one-time investment of roughly $305,000. I'm going to, the fiscal impact of our outsourcing alternatives included nutrition services, that's food services, roughly $8.9 million savings over five years. I do want to just take the time to point out that with food service, that's, that budget is really not a part of your general fund, and so those are federal funds, and so the school system really doesn't get the full, while their savings doesn't really impact your, your, your general fund. In transportation, however, we identified roughly $16.4 million in savings over five years. Facilities, roughly $28.8 million savings in five years in facilities. The savings mainly are through energy management and outsourcing your, your maintenance functions. Excuse me, and I think there was one more there, if you go back, Odysseus? Okay. And then one-time in facilities investment, roughly $200,000, because we feel like the school system is in need of a, a formal, long-range facilities plan. But roughly met 92, the school system roughly met 92 best practices, and there's roughly 98 observations. So moving on to District Org, some of the things that we identified is the school system has an opportunity to reduce administrative costs by periodically evaluating its assistant principal staffing model. One of the things, a lot of school systems when we go, people think, the community and really a lot of your organizations tend to think that the school system is overstaffed in the, in the central office, and that's not the case here in Nashville. Just want to take the opportunity to, to point that out. We think you're, that you're using your, utilizing your resources wisely in that area. And we did feel like, according to this recommendation and observation, that you're a little overstaffed in the assistant principal area. We also thought that in District Org, that there is a need for completing the design of a performance dashboard that would enable the school board to effectively monitor initiatives to improve student achievement and operational, operational performance that are, that's included in your Education 2018 Excellence for Every Student, the school system's five year strategic plan. Moving on to educational service delivery, one of the things that we saw is that there is a need for implementing a proven behavior management system and strategies that will improve overall discipline. It will also reduce the disparities in discipline and in disproportional assignments to alternative learning centers. The other thing that we saw is the continued development, the need for the continued development and improved support structure, staff curriculum and instructional strategies to increase the language proficiency and academic, academic preparedness of English language learners. And then finally, another recommendation that has a, an educational service delivery that has a fiscal impact to it, is that a lot of your, your high school libraries do not meet the state selection size standard. And so that's one of the areas that we saw in educational service delivery that had a fiscal impact. We looked at also, we were asked to look at charter schools in your area. You've got several high-performing charter schools that offer an opportunity for the school system to improve the academic performance of its students. Therefore, there's a demand in the community to expand the alternatives to persistently low-performing traditional schools. The school system requires the means for capturing and recovering indirect and administrative costs associated with the charter schools. And what that means is that you're not really, there's, there's a cost associated with administering your, the charter schools that you have, and, and we feel like the school system could do a little bit better job of coming up with a model so that you're picking up that, that cost. Moving on to human capital, the school system's Human Capital Services Department is not structured and functioning optimally to support human capital needs and should align employee activities within the department to report to the appropriate functional leader, just a little bit, an organizational structure there that might be a little bit more appropriate for the school system. And then the school system has experienced high teacher turnover rates over the past three school years, and they should develop a plan to stabilize a teacher retention. Then the last thing we want to point out in human capital is that there's a division of employee benefits plans, or the division of employee benefits plan between Metropolitan Nashville Government for non-certified support staff and the school system for certificated teaching staff, causes higher cost to the school system and creates an atmosphere of inequity among employees. So that's an area that has a cost impact to it for the human capital area. Moving on to financial management, risk-based audit approaches would optimize internal school fund audit resources and schedules while adding audit outcomes to principals, evaluate, to principal evaluations, which would enhance the value and importance of school fund audits. And then finally, prepaid business cards offer a more efficient means of distributing basic education program funds to teachers to purchase supplies. In the area of facilities, that's another area that we identified some cost savings. One area that we looked at, that we actually didn't quantify those cost savings, we felt like the implement, the implementation of a comprehensive plan to optimize, to optimize facility utilization and all of your clusters will reduce the number of overcrowded and underutilized schools. So when you go through the report, you're going to see there that in several of your, I think on the east end, you've got several clusters where your high schools, you've got several schools within your clusters that are, are underutilized. And then you've got also some mini school, schools in several of your clusters that are overutilized, and just balancing that, particularly what we found is that a lot of school systems, in your underutilized schools, there's a cost for operating those schools, basically, and it's, it's just harder to fund when they're under, because you're picking up all of typically an assistant principal and all of the operating costs that's associated with running that, a school, a little bit smaller than it typically, than it should be. We looked at the fact that the, the school system doesn't really have an energy conservation program, and potentially could save roughly $973,000, $974,000 annually by implementing one. And then again, we talked a little bit about the outsourcing model earlier, and school system, we worked with two very large outsourcing providers, and the school system, by outsourcing maintenance, has the opportunity to save, one with energy management, roughly $1.6, $1.7 million annually, and, and roughly $5.5 million, we got one estimate for outsourcing the maintenance function. Talked a little bit earlier about nutrition services. Basically, you're, and it's a well-run program overall. Nutrition services, though, your current payroll costs are 52% of your revenues, and you've got an opportunity there, we feel, to reduce your payroll cost by roughly 10%, 10 percentage points. One of the things that we, we think we, we, we saw there is that a lot of the schedules could be a little bit more efficient and things like that. Also, we, again, I talked a little bit already about the potential to outsource, what your savings might be for outsourcing food service. Our estimate at the midpoint for doing that annually was roughly $2.1 million a year. Transportation, basically, we saw a significant backlog of fleet replacement that you've got, just need to have a little bit better handle on that. We saw that your exceptional education transportation costs are significantly higher or above the norms due to the legal requirements for, with your special education students. And then we saw that you, there's a need, you've got a lot of old fleet in, with your yellow buses, and just the sheer replacement cost of doing that. And we consulted again with a national transportation provider, and they felt that they could save roughly $4 million annually with doing some of your, a better job with making your routes and schedules a little bit more efficiently. And then there'd be a cost avoidance of roughly $3.2 million, is what they came back with on an annual basis, that you would not have to incur for the replacement of your fleet. Safety and security, we're not going to do that. We had several area findings in that area, but because, we don't want to talk about that publicly because of the, the security associated with that, so it is in the copy of your final report, though. Technology management, system needs a long-range technology plan that incorporates hardware replacement strategy that could be more effectively, that could more effectively drive district-wide technology initiatives and technology infrastructure upgrades. And then the appointment of an information security officer would provide the expertise required to develop and manage technology, security and risk strategies. And then we've got educational spending. I do want to spend a few minutes talking about that, a few minutes talking about that. One of the things that we thought that was really very good in this school system is that you're spending your money in the right resource, in the, in the right places. A lot of times, we will go to school systems and they basically are forwarding or driving resources to school, to schools and in clusters, basically where you've got more affluent and middle-class people, and that's not the case here in Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. You're, you're, you're driving your funds basically to the schools that are the most economically disadvantaged and with the highest need, and we thought that was very, very commendable. But roughly, you're spending 62 cents of each dollar on your general purpose spending, and roughly $14,747 per students, per student, which goes, and then $5,870 per student directly at the school level, level, not including specialty goods. And then lastly, we looked at performance accountability, just the need for the school system to come up with, and they are in the process of doing that, a more robust accountability system. Right now, while the school system has planned a comprehensive performance accountability framework, it needs to do a little bit better job of evaluating its educational programs. And then the other major recommendation and observation is that the school system should develop a formal performance accountability system to better manage and oversee administrative and operational functions on a monthly basis. And so that's, those are the highlights. We hit those pretty quickly. But at this point, I would just kind of, like, I know a lot of you, I've seen in your report, I was cast to do it in 15 minutes, and we started a few moments late, so I just kind of want to take questions from the floor, and hopefully we can, we can answer those.
Thank you so much for giving that presentation. Before we take questions, I just want to say, again, this is a joint meeting of the Education and Budget and Finance Committee, and I just want to make sure I recognize my colleague, who is the Budget and Finance Chair, Councilman Pridemore. So thank you as well. I also want to say that everyone should have an agenda, and we're going to try to stick with that agenda as much as possible as I maneuver through this machine up here. And it seems like Councilwoman Matthews, you're first in the queue. Again, this is an informational session. We do have Dr. Register, Director of Metro Schools, that will come to us at 5:35 to also, to give his, their performance audit update as well. Is that, did that do?
Hello. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, Madam Chair. And thank you all for, for coming and presenting to us today. I have one question, one quick comment. You, you mentioned when you talked about charter schools, that we, we probably don't have the best plan for administering charter schools in place. Have you seen good examples in other cities, and what are some of those cities that maybe have a better plan than we do? And what are some things that differ from what we're doing currently in Nashville in those cities?
Well, I think what, what we said was that just picking up the actual cost, having a better cost model, so that you're actually picking up the, your administrative cost for actually administering your charter school program. And so I think that's a little bit different than, than what you said, because basically, you've got, you're losing kind of the money that's going out with, with the enrollment of the charter schools, and so you just want to have actually just a little bit better comprehensive model of making sure that you're going through and you're charging back the, the charter schools. And actually, New Orleans Public Schools, when we did, we worked in New Orleans Public Schools immediately after Hurricane Katrina, and they set up, for really a different purpose, several charter school, the recovery, the New Orleans Charter School Recovery System and Algiers Public Schools, and they have a very detailed cost model, basically, so that the cost are, that they are recouping the cost from, for example, the, what's, for New Orleans Public Schools. So that would be a great example.
Thank you. Thank you for that example. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll reserve my comment.
Thank you, Councilwoman Matthews. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Chair. Let's go back to, I've got a couple of notes that I took here. Facilities, over a five-year period, $28 million savings in that arena. The, what I heard, I think, was the heating and cooling and was where the greatest savings. Can you kind of recap, recapture that for us?
Yeah. In, in facilities, we, we identified two areas. First of all, the, you've got energy management systems, but not necessarily a comprehensive energy management program. And so one of the, well, we, just, and I think there's four disparate systems, consolidating those and having an over, we, having an energy manager, basically, that's monitoring your cost. One of the things that we saw is that with, like, with your, your utility bills, the bills are not, basically, the, all of the cost are not tracked. I mean, you, you pay the bills and everything, but just identifying ways so that you're looking at individual schools with more robust energy management programs and having that district-wide. I think we estimated a potential 5% savings by just doing that. And then I think one of the, the providers gave, just, they, they would go in and implement such a system that you'd get roughly $5 million in savings on that, and then another projected savings from just outsourcing your maintenance function was, is roughly 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollars from doing that.
Okay. And then the, the second part of the question, a total, if you combine all the cost savings that you've recommended to the administration and to the board, I think it was like 54 million, give or take, over the five-year period?
Yes.
So about $10 million on average a year, a little over $10 million on average a year.
Let me make a clarifying point. That 54 million is related directly to the alternative sourcing recommendations. That, we stripped that piece out for it to stand alone, and the remaining recommendations that we had without including the outsourcing alternative was a net investment of a couple hundred thousand bucks.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Council Lady Allen?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on the charter administration cost. What, what are those costs? Is it just the salary of the person that oversees it, or, and how, how large is that cost in, in relation to the overall school budget or, or per student cost?
We didn't really quantify it, but it is. It's in part the salary of administrators.
How many?
I think we have three.
Okay.
Yes, the, I need to kind of go back and look that, look, look that piece up, but it's, it's just the overall, the administration of, just say, for example, when they're using buses, or just things like that, is picking up all of those, the cost associated with administering the charter school program.
Do they, do they use the buses for regular transportation or just for special field trips?
For the most part, no.
So you're saying like they don't, they don't charge a cost when they borrow school buses and things like that?
Well, it, it, there's different arrangements for that. Hold on. So, the Office of Director of Schools, okay, so for example, if you look at the Office of Director of, when, everybody in the school system, it's, it's kind of like an enterprise-wide model. Basically, everybody's time in the school system could be, or a portion of their time could be charged to the administrator, in the administration of charter schools. And we've got in here in the report, exhibit on page 3-23, the Office of Director of Schools. For example, the Board of Education, the cost, the, the Office of Director of Schools, the cost is $739,800. The Board of Education, a cost of $417,600. The Chief Financial Officer, all of the departments, there's a portion of what they are doing that is, that is, that where they're spending time on charter school administration, and just kind of going through, and developing a cost accounting model and cost accounting initiatives, so that they, so that you roughly have a charge back for recouping those costs. Is that, is that clear?
And then can you help me understand how charter schools are paid the $8,000 or $9,000 per student, or they're, that money is passed over to them to use for each student in a similar way?
Well, student, money follows the student. And so they, so money follows the student, so you want to make sure that you're recouping as much of that, when you lose that student, that you're recouping as much of that back as you, as, as that you're entitled to.
And so I'm just trying to compare how it works in a, in a regular zoned school as opposed to a charter. Money follows a student to a zoned school, and do we charge them administrative cost, or how, can you help me compare?
No, because they're part of your.
They're, they're a part of your overall school system, okay? So there's not going to be a charge to a zone, a charge back to a zone. There's an allocation that takes place between of those indirect costs that are administrative to assist with running and overseeing those institutions, those schools in those areas. But the charter schools are different because they're standalone schools.
Okay.
Makes sense?
I'm, I'm going to study the books on it. I may, I may call you back.
All right.
And then I had another question about IT. You mentioned some potential savings there. Could those savings be realized through cooperation with the Metro IT program? I mean, could that be who it is outsourced to as they do their long-term replacement plan for IT hardware?
We, no, we, and that's one of the things that I think we were asked to look at, and we, we didn't really find that you would achieve enough savings there in order to make it worth your while to do so. We looked at, when we looked at outsourcing, we looked at the possibility of utilizing or leveraging Metropolitan Government for maintenance, technology and facilities. And for various reasons in all of those departments, we didn't think it would be feasible to do it. For example, in facilities, you have two totally different work order systems. The school system uses SchoolDude, and I think the Metropolitan Nashville Government, I believe, uses BOSS solution. It's been a while since we did this BOSS solution. And so a SchoolDude is actually designed for schools versus BOSS solution is, is designed for commercial and, and, and those types of buildings. And so looking at the way that you would actually set up your system to do your, to track your work orders and things like that, while the city government has the technical expertise to probably oversee that, just the way you manage your resources to deploy your labor and things like that, we didn't think that that was economically efficient to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, I know that all of y'all have an agenda. I have two more in the queue, and I know that school board member, Will Pinkston, has a question as well, so I'm trying to get to the first round of these questions. And as always, you know, this is a lot of information, so please, if you need to have questions to be answered, write them down so that we can submit them to the proper persons. Councilman Claiborne?
Yes, I'll be brief. In what you were talking about in terms of cost, in the operating budget and for the various metro departments, we have what are called internal service fees.
Yes.
So those are, each department has assessed a certain amount of money for services that they use that they don't include by a line item in their budget, but it's, it's metro services that they're paying for in their budget. So would that be a parallel to what you're?
For the charter schools?
Yes.
Yes. That's, that's a great example.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Councilman Claiborne. Councilman Davis, Anthony Davis?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the under-enrollment. I represent East Nashville, and I thought I said, I thought I heard you say that East was the most under-enrolled.
Hold on.
And I'm just curious what feedback or info you had on that, any explanation?
Okay, let me look at that. Hold on just a moment. Okay, yours, if you look at the, there's 12 clusters. If you look at any op cluster, it's currently operating, it's on, this is on, I'm on page 6-25 of the report. If you look at the.
Not the executive service, she's in.
I'm sorry, in the broad report. I'm looking at, so if you, when you get, kind of get home, there's a, there's an example of this in here. This is exhibit 6-16. Antioch is your, your best utilized cluster with 102%. Then, but if you look at, for example, White's, the White's Creek Cluster, it's operating at roughly 64% utilization. And so when you look at White's Creek. And so, when you look at Whites Creek, basically, your, yeah, you, when you look at, you've got Whites Creek Comprehensive High School is operating at roughly 65% utilization. And then, you've got Rick Church Middle School, which is, was operating at the time we looked at it, roughly 21%. And so, when you look at Stratford Cluster is another one, where you've got just a wide disparity of utilization rates in that cluster. You've got Kirkpatrick Enhanced Option School, that's way overcrowded, operating at roughly 128% utilization. And then, you've got Isaac Little, Littleton Middle School, which was operating at 58% utilization, based on the data that we were provided. And so, what it's, and some of these things, I'm not gonna, it's, it's hard to do, because a lot of your, your, the areas where you've got the, your utilization is the lowest, they tend to be your more rural areas. And so, it's, it's, but what we recommend it is that you kind of go through and re-look at, redrawing your, 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 your cluster boundaries and things like that, because just as I pointed out a little bit earlier, when you're operating underutilized schools, basically, there's a cost associated with doing that, and it's, it's, it's difficult.
Yeah, and that, that's helpful. I mean, we have a, there's just a wide variety of stuff going on. We're, we're actually about to recommend some repurposing of assets just within that Stratford Cluster, for example, and some of the East, East stuff going on, so, yeah, I was just curious, just your take on that. The other question, I was thinking about the nutrition stuff. I thought you said there was potential savings there, and, you know, I'm sure there, I'm sure there is. I just want, want to get your take on, are we providing, you know, really healthy food and good choices? I'm, I'm actually more worried, concerned about that for our students than necessarily a little cost savings. Implementing the, you know, sort of Mrs. Obama's, you know, there was a lot of federal measures they were doing to improve the quality. I just want to, want to get your take on how we're doing.
We thought the food, we thought the food service program oper, actually operated pretty well. You've got some great partnerships, if I'm remembering correctly, with Alimen Nashville, just some business partnerships that are working really well. It wasn't so much, it was nutrition, your fund balance is in really good shape. We thought you could possibly utilize your fund balance a little bit more to update some of your kitchens and some of the equipment that need to be done. But, no, it wasn't a matter of nutrition. It was, it's mainly labor and coming up with, I believe, just utilizing, making your, no, it's your, A, I think you have an opportunity, based on your friend reduced, number of students, that's friend reduced lunch, is, is moving more towards a universal feeding program and just kind of doing some things like that.
Which I think we are doing that, yes, so, cool. All right, well, I just want to get your take, and, and, you know, I mean, rather than, I, I understand the audit is to, obviously, cost, cost savings is a huge deal, but also, you know, with
No, we have a, if you look, I think we've got accomplishments in there.
Cool. Yeah, and with the nutrition, I just want to make sure we're headed more towards, like, really healthy choices and, you know, something that'll sustain the kids better through the day.
No, we saw that.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Bedney, we're gonna take this question and ask this question as well as the last question from School Board member, Will Pinkston.
Thank you.
You're not, mm, okay. Trying to get you on here.
It's, it's no Okay, I'll ask a question while we, hello?
Okay.
I was going to start singing, I'm glad I did. So, question for you is regarding outsourcing. Have you evaluated all the different agencies, businesses that we already outsourced to? I mean, was there any metric in your study? I couldn't see if you have done that.
We looked at the fact that, can you hear me?
Yes.
We looked at the fact that the school system has already successfully outsourced the custodial operations, and we took that into consideration. So we know it will work in your, in, in, within the school system, because you've already successfully outsourced custodial operations. I think you're saving, the first year of savings was roughly $6 million, and I think the, what we calculated that you would save, or cost avoid, and since you've already outsourced it, outsourced it would be roughly, I think, $8.3 or $8.5 million by the third year.
So your measure for success is the savings, if I understand correctly? You haven't really studied
Well, no, no, not just the savings, it's the fact that the schools are clean. We looked at your surveys, not, it's not just based on savings.
So you did check
We looked at the fact, yeah, we looked at the, there, every school, they have almost kind of like a report card where they check in with the principals and things like that, and so, it's a combination of the savings and the quality of service that's being rendered. So you're, you're actually
I'm asking because I couldn't find in the report, so if you could show me where I can find that information. I mean, not now, later, you can just
Okay, yeah, we're gonna be around
Thank you.
If you need to ask us any questions later. You can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bedney. Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for, to the council for the opportunity to come together. This is actually the first time we've had, as a board, the opportunity to hear from the auditors directly after the delivery of the audit. So I just wanted to go back and ask the auditors to speak a little bit more to the cost impact of charter schools. We talked a minute ago about the administrative costs, which are actually the smaller costs, but the audit does on page 3-16 reference the issue of fixed costs, such as building maintenance, computer network infrastructure, health services, which do not vary according to the audit in traditional schools based on enrollment. The audit calls out specifically that it is not possible to reduce teacher costs proportionate to losses in revenue, and for these costs to be reduced significantly, the school, meaning the traditional school, would need to close altogether. So as you all know, the elephant in the room in this conversation is the structural, operational, and fiscal challenges that we have with absorbing new schools. And if I read the audit correctly, what, what it's really saying is, we cannot continue unabated growth of charter schools without closing traditional schools relative to the budget. And could you guys speak to this fixed cost issue and, and what, what this means?
Yeah, I think what it's, as you lose more students to charter schools, basically, your base is, is going down. And so, eventually, as, as that happens more aggressively, you're, you're, it's not just the Nashville community, that's all, that's all communities, particularly large urban school districts such as MNPS, that have a, a large number of charter schools. I mean, it's, it does, it drains resources from your school system, and I, I think that's what you're asking, and, and you're absolutely correct. That is what the, the report states, because your fixed cost is very, very difficult for you to, to control your fixed cost, because for every school that you've got, and it's kind of what I talked about with the underutilized buildings, you're gonna, you can't, you've got, if, if you're running a, a building that's with low utilization, you still have to heat the building, all of the operational cost of, of keeping that building open remain the same. And so, that's, that's kind of where we're going with the discussion on that.
Okay, Will, it's a fairly, it's a fairly rudimentary exercise, to be frank with you, okay? Revenue follows the student to charter schools. Fixed costs do not follow the student proportionately. So therefore, the more, the more revenue loss you get, the fixed cost base stays the same, there's erosion. So it's a pretty simple model, okay? So that's, so, so you're exactly right, and that's what we tried to point out in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Since there are no more questions at this time, we're gonna transition to, we have one question, okay, very quickly.
This, this will be a very quick question. I know we're getting right here from the administration. There's some things that have been rejected on the cost-saving arena. Just in your opinion, I'm not saying this is how it has to operate, whose responsibility is it to bring to the forefront the cost savings? Is it gonna be the administration, or ultimately, is it gonna be the board?
Well, let me, let me take, take a shot at answering that question. There are two, there are two pieces to this, okay? Having been a, having been a former board member myself and understanding governance, there are two pieces to this. There's a leadership team piece of this, and there's a governance piece to this. It is first, the primary responsibility of the leadership team to bring to the board a method for reducing cost in periods of time in which you have pressure on the budget. And it is the board's responsibility, as the trustees and the oversight group, to make certain that they are doing what's in the best interest of the overall institution, which means, and I'm gonna be very candid with you, because I've been on both sides of this, to be very candid with you, which means, they have to make sure that the admin, the leadership understands what the direction of the board is in terms of meeting their budget responsibilities. The board has two responsibilities, only two, only two. Number one is to look at the hiring of the director, and number two is to look at the overall budget resources of, two of their primary responsibilities, overall budget resources that are being utilized and allocated within the system. So when you have this pressure on expenses and revenue, you have to make some hard, hard choices. And I'll make my, my final comment, I'll, I'll bring a personal anecdote here, okay? One of the things that's very difficult to do is to embrace an outsourcing model in times of financial distress. It's very difficult because there are people involved, okay? However, when I was the chairman, we had to make the same kind of decision with folks. But what you have to do is, you have to make the decision, and you have to look at it from a compassionate standpoint, because there are a number of ways that you can do this that will have compassion for the individuals who are affected. You've got early retirement options, you've got cash payouts, you've got phased-in, you've got phased-in reductions, you've got conversations with the outsourced provider that will let the provider know what the vision of the board and the administration is. So those are the kind of alternatives you can look at when you're looking at alternative sourcing, having done this a number of times before. Those are the kind of things you need to look at. So, so I, I think those options are on the table, I know what the responses were to them, but I think those options are still options that the dis, the, the school system needs to take a look at, so.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. We're going to transition now, I mean, Mr. Lanier. We're gonna transition at this point to Dr. Register and Chris Henson, the Chief Operates, Chief Financial Operation Officer, and I want to thank you all for giving this presentation, Ms. Murphy, and your team for being here today. And after that, we'll hear from Elisa Kim, School Board member. And as, again, as they're setting up, getting ready, I want to thank the School Board members here today, Mary Pierce, Dr. Brandon, Dr. Joanne Brandon, Will Pinkston, Elisa Kim, and Anna Shepherd. Thank you so much for being here today.
Amy.
Oh, Amy. Amy walked in. Thank you, Amy Froch.
Madam Chair, members of the council, thank you for hearing from us. I'll try to keep my remarks brief and, and on a high level, and then we'll have, save as much time as we can to delve into questions you might want to have. I have some general remarks, and Chris Henson will answer all the questions. So, overall, overall, the audit results reflect a generally, generally positively on the school district. The auditors identified a number of best practices for each area they assessed, and we're already meeting nearly two-thirds of the best practices identified by the audit. As you know, this audit was completed almost a year ago now. Also, the auditors listed 46 accomplishments in the report, identifying areas where the district is performing exceptionally well. We're also grateful for the show of confidence in district leadership and the strategic plan, and it's very gratifying to see such important programs as the expansion of pre-kindergarten and the academies of Nashville held up as a model for others in the nation to follow. The district has accepted, accepted or partially accepted 87% of the auditor's recommendations. The management responses are listed in detail at the end of each chapter, showing exactly which recommendations we accepted, partially accepted, or rejected. Of the recommendations rejected, many call for creating new performance measures for areas where we already use existing performance measures from the Council for Great City Schools. Others are simply not feasible for our district and its strategic vision, such as district-wide fundraising through sales of coupon books or reducing labor costs for nutrition services, and I'll mention that a little bit more. One rejected recommendation calls for a reduction in the number of assistant principals, which we believe is not in the best interest of, of our district and goes against the philosophy that we have of giving schools budget and staffing flexibility and really putting our strength in the schools for instructional leadership. Since the audit was done nearly a year ago now, we've already implemented or begun implementing a number of recommendations, such as several of the recommendations in regard to school culture and student discipline are addressed by the district joining passage and implementing a restorative justice set of practices in our school system. Tony Majors heads up this effort. The Human Capital Communications and Nutrition Services Department are all developing strategic plans that address many of the concerns in the audit report. New fleet and routing management software will eliminate the need for many of the recommendations in the transportation report. Very important distinction to make, we are now offering universal no-cost breakfast and lunch to every student, which eliminates the need for many of the recommendations for nutrition services, such as increasing meal service. Since we started the no-cost lunch and breakfast program this year, we're serving an additional 21,000 meals per day. Our number of meals per day served is 92,000 now, and we have a student enrollment of 85,000. If you check that against most all other school systems, you'll find that our participation rate is extremely high. And outsourcing the entire department is now, the, the entire department is, we need to recognize that the department is now 100% federally funded, and so, outsourcing would not save the district or metro government any funds. If the district accepted, accepted and implemented all of the recommendations, it would require an additional investment of 1.1 million in next year's budget. The report identifies nearly equal amounts of savings that can be generated over the next five years and investments needed to improve services if we don't consider outsourcing. The only significant long-term savings identified by the auditors would require outsourcing major, major portions of the district's non-academic operations. The report recommends outsourcing transportation, nutrition services, maintenance, and energy management. We believe the savings generated by outsourcing these functions would largely come from reduced labor and benefits costs, and I think Mr. Lanier remarked about the, about other considerations in those areas. We have decided in the district not to pursue those recommendations at this time. We have explored the risks and benefits of outsourcing these services in the past, and we have determined that, that the savings would, would not be worth the potential, the potential savings that we would have. In fact, the, these recommendations could potentially cost metro government more in the long run with an expected loss in quality of service, and that's very important. And I'd ask you to consider the fact that we've joined in, in member, in union with metro government this year on transportation, where we're providing MTA bus passes for all of our high school students. There's a partnership there that's developing that I think is very strong, and we need to continue along that line. The audit report is a thorough analysis of our district's operations, over 600 pages, as you know. We always appreciate the outside perspective, and we have, as a management team, been looking very carefully at the recommendations made, and we value much of the feedback that was given. We'll continue to pore over this extensive report and make sure that we consider every, every recommendation seriously. I'll ask Chris if he has any specific comments. Some of the specific recommendations, Chris can address very well, but those, those conclude my remarks, and we'll be glad to consider any questions. But I would like to give Chris a moment to say anything that he would like to before we start with the questions.
And I'll be brief, because I want to make sure to give as much time as we can to questions. I first want to thank Mark Swan, Carlos Holt, and the Metro Internal Audit Division, as well as Sharon Murphy and Odysseus Lanier, as well as their colleagues. We had a very good working relationship throughout this project. It began over a year ago, and we, we take this audit very seriously. We, in fact, had two marathon days where Sharon spent from early to late with me and other people on October 30th and 31st to go through chapter by chapter and to discuss and to make sure that everything and to make sure that everything was clear and, and that any questions were answered, and we appreciate that. As Dr. Register mentioned, at the end of every chapter, there are management responses that we have spent a lot of time compiling in regard to every single observation and recommendation that's made to the performance audit. We, as I said, we took this and take this very seriously and have put a lot of time into it, but again, I want to just allow as much time as possible for questions, so I'll end my remarks there.
Thank you, Dr. Register and Mr. Henson, and I will entertain questions as soon as I find Councilman Glover. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the one thing, since you've gotten here, Dr. Register, that is more than apparent in this audit, is that you began a process of moving people from Bransford out into the schools. I think that now reflects, and I wanted to go back, Ms. Murphy, I think you'd said 62%, but I thought it was 72% roughly, there was a percent, 72% right, is, is going to direct educational of every dollar, 72 cents on the dollar. Do you see out of this report, Dr. Register, that any other savings could happen from, from Bransford, because, Ms. Murphy, I think it was you who stated that central office really is, is, is operating rather efficiently, but do you see any other opportunities of moving central office into the schools to make it more efficient and push even maybe one, two, three more percentage points to classroom?
I, I hope you'll see that reflected in this year's operating budget to some extent, and then when we look at the way we disperse federal funds more there, that you, you can recognize. I'll mention one thing that's very important that we're implementing or proposing to implement this year, and that's school-based budgeting, where we really push more of the dollars into the schools to give principals and leadership teams and faculties in schools greater flexibility in using that. And generally, I think you'll see that reflected in the budget that we, that we present to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilwoman Claiborne?
Thank you. I have a quick question, a comment. Dr. Register, when you were talking about the meals, and I may have misunderstood this, and so I'm just asking for clarification, but I understood you to say that you're feeding more meals than the total enrollment of the system. If that's true, how are we doing that?
Breakfast and lunch.
Okay.
We, we eat 92,000 breakfasts and lunches a day.
Okay.
With an enrollment of 85,000, that's, and so I don't have a breakdown on how many breakfasts and how many lunches, but.
Okay, so it's two, two meals? That's, okay, that clarifies that. Okay. And then the comment is, you mentioned about the, in outsourcing, there is a risk of the quality of service, that's the big question. My comment, and I've made this same comment several times over the last couple of years, but if the quality of service that we are now receiving in housekeeping and grounds that we have from outsourced companies is any evidence, we're getting way more than we ever got from those operations being done within the system. So, I'm just, just saying.
Uh, thank, thank you for that question, and I think it is a matter of, that, that can, can, can take quite a bit of study on our part, and we've actually, we've actually analyzed maintenance, we've looked at transportation. I think, I think transportation's a complicated issue for us in the district, but we looked at maintenance and child nutrition services, and maintenance is one that, that Mr. Henson can address, because when, when we talk about maintenance costs or savings there, what I think often we don't recognize is, is what other services maintenance provides to the district. And, and we actually had a, had a proposal developed to look at outsourcing maintenance, and, and, and as we studied that, we made a decision not to do that because we feel like the, that, that the company that we asked for a proposal from really didn't have that much to offer for us. I've outsourced in other districts, I've outsourced transportation, I've outsourced maintenance, and I've outsourced custodial, all three. And, and because of the efficiencies that we have here and some changes that we've made, in my personal opinion is that we are outsourcing where we gain and we're continuing to serve within the district, those areas where we feel like we're getting a good return on our investment. But always an issue to consider, always an issue to consider going forward. And Chris, I'd like to get you to speak to the maintenance, if you will, or, and Fred's back there that, who can talk about transportation if you'd like for us to do that.
I'll be brief and just sort of reiterate something that Dr. Register said. We, we did look closely at the possibility a little, a while back, and one of the things that is sort of difficult to quantify in as far as the, the scope of services would be the, the additional services, for instance, that our maintenance department provides regarding different events, event setup. There's, there are lots of things that the maintenance department does to benefit schools and students that is a little difficult to quantify in scope of work, as we've discussed with some other providers, as well as the, the additional work that our maintenance department, which is now under new leadership and, and doing very well. The additional services that they provide, for instance, construction, minor, small construction-type projects that are performed at schools by our maintenance department because the, the labor's already there being paid, and so we, we're able to accomplish a lot of small, smaller, minor-type construction projects through our maintenance department rather than contracting each of those out, as well as the, the definition differences as far as what is an operating cost and what is a capital cost. Currently, our maintenance department handles, can handle some, some large projects, and when we were talking with the potential provider, there was discussion of, you know, for instance, a threshold if something were going to cost more than, let's say, $5,000, that would be considered a capital cost and would be the district responsibility. And so we felt like that through those discussions, and then once everything was taken into consideration, we really didn't see much of a, if any, of a call savings and, and were concerned that there might even be some lower level of service that we might receive. So that, that's, again, in a nutshell, the, the discussion that we've had over time relating specifically to maintenance.
Thank you. Council Lady Dow?
Thank you. I think my question's probably directed at the auditors, but maybe you can provide some input on this, too. I wanted to go back and look at the analysis of educational spending. I went off and left my notes on it, but I noticed in flipping through this, and this is a huge, this is a lot of great information, but I noticed that the Cambridge and Antioch cluster, and looking at like the cost expenditure per student, that there's a disparity, like a huge amount of, like Cambridge and Antioch is the lowest cost per student by cluster, and one of these, and I was trying to find where I had it highlighted in something, it showed like how much is spent for Hillwood, and it was significant. The Hillwood cluster has a majority of Caucasian students and has the sixth highest cost per student among the 12, 12 clusters, whereas like Antioch and Cambridge has a lower. Are you able to explain a little bit about like the expenditures per student, how it's allocated, spent, and why Cambridge and Antioch is, have the lowest? Do you have that, it's on 11/20 in that, that audit book? I'm just trying to understand that, because one of the questions we had when we conducted the audit was really looking at how much money is spent in the classroom and whether there's equity between the different clusters and the amount of money being spent at each school and per student spending. So that's where this is coming from, but if you're able to provide some insight on that, I appreciate it.
I'll give it a whirl and, and of course, be happy to defer to the, the auditors. My first thought would be that the Cambridge and Antioch clusters are the, by far, the fastest-growing clusters in the county, which means that they have the most, the highest utilization rate as far as schools go. And so as schools are full or even overcapacity, the cost per pupil amount would, would be lower than clusters that had schools that, for instance, might be underutilized. And so that would be my first thinking, would be because of Antioch and Cambridge, if you look at the utilization percentages for those clusters, they're going to be the highest because it's the fastest-growing segment of Davidson County. And so I'm, I'm assuming that because the schools are larger and the schools are, are overutilized, overcrowded, you have a, which would transfer to a lower per pupil cost per school. And so that, that would be my first assumption, and I'll, I'll defer to Sharon or Odysseus.
I would totally agree with that, and I think the other thing, and, and Chris, you could, I, I think there's a conscious effort, there appeared to be a conscious effort to actually drive more costs, as I think I, I indicated that in the presentation, because you basically were, you, a lot of, and I think that's a very commendable practice on the part of MNPS, that they are consciously driving more funding to the schools, to the schools and the clusters with the highest need. Typically, you're going to need more resources where your test scores and things like that, and, and you, where you need more resources, and I think that's exactly what they are doing. So we looked at that as, as very positive. Does that make, I mean, Chris is exactly right, it's kind of like that fixed, fixed cost that we talked about, there's a certain amount of fixed cost associated with operating a school. So if the school, if you've got the majority, if you look at the majority, the more schools that you have in a cluster that are overcrowded, basically it drives your, the, the cost per pupil down.
Did that answer your question, Council Lady Dow?
That, that did, that answered my question, and that was kind of what I was thinking. I work in cost accounting, so I do this, so I, I understand that. But it seemed like I read like Maplewood, I don't know, I think that was one of the clusters where the utilization was not as high as Antioch, but there was more spending there, so I didn't know if it was because of the demographics or, you know, school older, you know, I didn't understand, you know, why this school, I think it was like 71%, I can't remember the exact amount, I was trying to find it, but it seemed like Maplewood was a little, had a lower utilization amount but higher expense, whereas we out in southeast Nashville, Antioch and Cambridge definitely are overutilized, overcrowded, with more students coming, just to let you know, you know, had a lower amount. So I was just trying to understand it, but I got the fixed cost part.
And that is, that is correct. The, the Maplewood cluster does have some underutilized schools, and they also have some of the schools that are enhanced option elementary schools, which are higher-cost schools where they have the lower class size and go an additional 45 minutes a day.
Thank you. We're going to answer this, take this one more question from Councilwoman Claiborne, and then we're going to move on to the next segment of our agenda.
Following up on the same line of discussion here, where Maplewood is identified as spending the most per student of any of the clusters, and Maplewood is also identified as the smallest of all the clusters. So they get more funding than, say, for instance, the McGavick cluster, which is the largest of all the clusters. So I'm, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I'm having trouble understanding the disparity in the distribution of funds, but at the same time, I think that speaks volumes for the clusters that are getting less money and are producing some of the best results with less dollars. Logically, that says to me that dollars do not necessarily equate to quality of product. So I, I real have some, some, some serious concerns about the disparity of the distribution of funds.
We'll, we'll look forward to talking with you about combined proposal that we're making in this year's budget, school-based budgeting and a weighted student funding formula, which is a component of that. To make, I, I think distribution of resources can actually improve this year. You must, must consider, though, that a McGavick high school, when, when you look at their total budget based on size, is, is very significant budget, and when you have a much smaller high school like a Maplewood or a Stratford, the cost per pupil can be higher, but the total amount of money going into the school to cover fixed costs, et cetera, is, is actually a lot less because of the variation in size. Stratford High School has 700 students, maybe a few less than that, and, and McGavick's at 2,300, maybe a few more than that. An assistant principal costs the same in both schools. And so when you've, when you've figured that on a, when you figure that on a cost-per-pupil basis, then McGavick's principal, who is one of the great principals in the country, costs a lot less than a principal at Maplewood High School per pupil, who is also one of the great principals in the country. So that, 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 that really does go a long way toward explaining what we have there.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Register, and I'm quite sure there's a lot of other questions that you all, that council members want to entertain with the staff, the administrative staff, as well as the, the auditors as well. And so please, I, you know, employ you to write down your questions, and then, you know, again, we have Councilman Glover and Council Lady Dow, who are part of the audit committee, that would be glad to also take your questions, you know, at another time. So with transitioning, thank you, Dr. Register, thank you, Chris Henson, and also take, thank your staff out there in the audience for coming today. We're going to transition to Alisa Kim, School Board Member, who will discuss the hiring process for the new director and anybody else who's going to join you.
Good evening. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair Moore, as well as Chairman Pride Moore. Dr. Gentry, first of all, regrets that she can't join us today for this important conversation, but she did ask me as the vice chair of the board to step in, to speak with you. So I'll just make a few brief remarks about where we are in the search process for our Director of Schools, and then I'm at the chair's discretion and yours to answer any questions. So as you know, the board has begun the search process, and we hope to have a new Director of Schools in place by July 1. So we know the goal is ambitious, but we feel it is important for the future of the students in our district, just like the very best leader that we can, and for that to happen in a really timely way. If it does look like that we won't be able to complete the search, though, by July 1, then we'll develop a plan for appropriate next steps. As you may know, we have already identified and hired a search firm, and after interviewing three firms, we chose Hazard, Young, Atia, and Associates, the same firm that the district contracted to facilitate the search that resulted in the hiring of Dr. Register. So they're very familiar with the city and our, the laws under which we must operate. Right now, the board is in the midst of scheduling a meeting with them to jointly develop the very specific steps that we need to take to identify the field of candidates, to interview them, and then to make our hire. We, of course, feel it's critically, critically important for the community to be involved in that process, and we believe we'll get lots of support and input from the community, which was completely affirmed by a group of, a number of groups in the community who came together to write a joint letter to the board this week. And of course, we're very interested in what you, our council members, have to say as well. The, we're fortunate to have the search firm who will coordinate then our entire community engagement effort. Madam Chair, there will be more details forthcoming as the search firm starts their process, and we'll keep the council up to date with details as they emerge.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. We do have a question for Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Vice Chair, I, I've always just been direct, and so I'm going to ask the, the question this way. If you look at the first chapter of here, there's some dysfunctionality, or if you want to read into it, et cetera, of the board right now, there's obviously some distrust that's stated clearly in here. I think that July 1 is.
Extremely aggressive.
Extremely aggressive goal, but with that, what challenges do you see? I read the article where your chair stated what she thought the challenge was. What challenges do you see with this board to be able to identify and have a exceptional Director of School come to Nashville? And what part of this, because I asked the firm that did this audit, what part of this audit are you going to use as a blueprint to help you chart and bring in the next Director of Schools?
Sure. So I think it's a fair comment. I mean, obviously, we do have a huge charge in front of us and some challenges. I do have, though, lots of hope about what we all believe, which is, my fellow board members and I believe that this is the single biggest thing that, and process we will undertake, the single biggest decision that we will make. And so. I do have, though, lots of hope about what we all believe, which is, my fellow board members and I believe that this is the single biggest thing that, and process we will undertake, the single biggest decision that we will make. And so, you know, this, this meeting that we're working to bring together with the board, as well as the firm, is going to be critical in terms of laying out what the characteristics we're looking for, the characteristics, the qualities that we're looking for in the next superintendent, and how do we map that out and come together around those, be very clear about what we're looking for, is going to be critical. You're right. I think we can do it. We've already had an early, earlier meeting facilitated by someone external that revealed, actually, we're, we're, we're actually quite similar in terms of who we're looking for. So that's the good news. But at the same time, I think some of the challenges inherent in the processes, I mean, I do this as a living in my day job, is recruiting, hiring, a lot of HR work, and I think the, the challenge is going to be attracting, of course, a really fantastic group of candidates who are just the right fit, who have the, who have the desire to be right here, and then also a fit for what we're looking for. And that's always the challenge of any major search like this, and so we do need to be mindful of creating an environment, and a space, and a place where people are attracted to. So, I think that, and there's lots of blocking and tackling that's going to happen in terms of trying to headhunt that person. I think it's going to be a big team effort, it's not going to be just the, the firm telling us, this is what we have, but I think a lot of proactivity on our part and individuals on the, on the board to also throw in ideas as well.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Claiborne?
Do, does the board think that it, any kind of a disservice and/or perhaps an impediment to getting a new director, to have that person in place before we have a new mayor in place and a new council? I mean, the probability is that this body here will be two-thirds, perhaps, new, and a new mayor. So during the interim, before Dr. Register came, we had some very capable interim leadership, and the ship didn't go off course. And so when Dr. Register came in, he actually had to deal with a mayor that wasn't always in agreement with what his goals and priorities were. So it looks to me like you're setting up a new superintendent for some rough waters on the very front end. So is that a disservice to somebody to bring them into the situation like that, and could it be a possible hindrance to getting that best candidate? Is that something the board is thinking about in this aggressive target date that you have?
Sure. Absolutely. We're trying to balance a number of things. We know it's in the best interests of the district to have someone in place before the school year, so they can start getting in to the details and the weeds and begin to cast their own vision. And at the same time, we want lots of input, we want to make the right choice, and based on the lessons learned from the last round, I think there are things that we can apply. One great idea that's come up in terms of community engagement is to make sure that we engage all the mayoral candidates now. There's no reason why we can't do that, to get their thoughts, to share ours, and to have that exchange even before the race, before the election. And it's going to be very critically important, too, with the council as well, to get, engage as many people, the council as a body unto itself. But then also, one thing that we are very cognizant of, of as we go into these meetings with Hazard, Young, and Atia, is to make sure that all the great ideas we've generated around community engagement are in fact implemented. And there's a number of different ways we can do that, very proactively, to surface all the voices that are important in this particular search. So we're hoping to try and balance all these different things around timing, as well as the need to get lots of engagement from critical stakeholders. At the same time, as I noted, you know, we are, if, if we don't have the right candidate, we're not going to, we, we will consider next steps like having an interim and other alternatives. We don't want to rush into anything either. We also are just trying to move the process along so that we're setting up the system, so, but it's a, it's a fair point, too, as well, in terms of all the things we're trying to balance and how we can make the best decisions, given competing interests.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Glover?
Unfortunately, you, you know, we don't really have an opportunity to talk one-on-one like we're doing here, so what we see is what we read in the paper. Can you help me understand, because I saw what happened in the McGavick cluster, obviously that's the area that we look at the most, over the last six years or so, and the tremendous strides that have been made there. It's a completely different school, the academies are, I feel like are, are very successful. It scares me, frankly, when I read the paper and I hear board members saying, "We're looking for an innovative director." What does that mean? And, I mean, and, and is this board going to take what's working and make sure that the next director doesn't dismantle those things that have been effective? And, and what's going to be your process in looking in that direction?
Yep. Well, first of all, I'll take that as feedback, Councilman Glover, so I hear you. In terms of innovation, I think you're absolutely right that we need to, when I think about innovation, and I do believe that other board members would, at least some of them, they can chime in themselves, would, would define it this way, too, it's, it's not just wholesale disruption. I mean, that is not what I'm thinking of when I think of innovation. It's about the cycle of continuous improvement. So if there's something working in the district, you're absolutely right, we need to scale that up, or we need to continue, we need to enable that to flourish, and that is part of innovation, that's part of our continuous improvement cycle. At the same time, if something is patently not working, we need to confront that, and that might require more disruption, it may not, it may require a little, it may require a lot, but we need to innovate, we need to continuously improve in those spaces, too. And so we are looking for somebody who has the wisdom and the acumen, and then figure out what is what. How do we make the best decisions that will serve our students the best? And, and really have a mindset of continuous improvement on the good things, as well as the things that we need to work on.
There are no more council members in the queue, and I want to thank you, Ms. Kim, for, you know, giving that presentation on an update of a new search for a director. That is going to conclude our meeting of the Education and Finance, Budget and Finance Committee meeting. So thank you all so much, and thank you, school board members, for coming out today as well. Thank you.